All right, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of April 1st, 2015. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The open meetings act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the exit gate is open and there is no need to get a parking pass. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in the chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note, the planning commission action today is final on items number 1.3, 1.4, and 4.1B. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the planning commission to the city council by filing a notice of appeal with the city clerk within 14 days following the action of the planning commission. The planning commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the city council or county board. The first item of business is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held March 18th, 2015. Do we have a motion?
Move approval of the revised minutes?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Call the vote.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Lust? Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under section three of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted on upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes. Please note that item 1.3, which is special permit 876C on today's agenda, is being removed from the consent agenda for a separate public hearing at the request of Commissioner Beecham. And that will be read under item 3.1, separate public hearing. First item on the consent agenda is text amendment 15002, amending section 27.63.200 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to clubs to delete the requirement that clubs be setback from all yard lines a distance of not less than one foot for each one foot of building height, and repealing section 27.63.200 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing. The next item is item 1.2A, change of zone number 15008, from AG to AGR to B5 on property generally located at South 84th Street and Pine Lake Road. Next item is item 1.2B, use permit number 140E to expand the limits of the existing use permit by approximately 17 acres to allow an automated car wash and approximately 210,000 square feet freestanding superstore on property generally located at South 84th Street and Pine Lake Road. And the final item under consent agenda is item 1.4, special permit number 11013A, an amendment to renew the special permit for the excavation of soil on lot 25, a regular tractor generally located one half mile west of Northwest 56th Street and north of West O Street. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on the consent agenda?
I see none.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item read on the consent agenda? If so, please stand and state that item.
All right, seeing no one, we will go ahead and entertain a motion. Move approval?
Second.
That's Miss Beecham. And Mr. Weber. All right, call the vote.
Beecham?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Again, this is final action on special permit number 11013A unless appealed to the city council.
There are no requests for deferral on today's agenda. So, we will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The planning commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first public hearing item.
Okay, item 3.1, a special permit number 876C to allow for the expansion of the existing club, including a request to reduce the front and side yard setback requirements on property generally located at 631D Street. This is final action by the planning commission unless appealed to the city council. Staff recommendation is conditional approval.
Good afternoon, Paul Barnes, planning staff. The request before you is to amend an existing special permit for a club. This is for the American Historical Society of Germans from Russia, which is located on D Street near the intersection of South Sixth and D. This is across the street from Cooper Park. Location is identified on this map here. So you can see the existing club building is located here. This would be D Street along the north and Sixth Street to the west. Cooper Park is to the north. There is an existing residence to the west and also to the east. All of this entire block is Zoned R4 Residential. The special permit for this club was originally approved in 1981, and there have been a couple of amendments to that special permit. They've expanded the boundaries, modified the boundaries, and added additional buildings. The request today is to do an addition on the existing club of about 3,000 square feet. And so you can see here, the addition is to the west of the existing building with some frontage on D Street. The special permit does limit the amount of lot coverage for clubs in residential districts and limits that to no more than 35% in the R4 district. This addition will not exceed that lot coverage. And along with the text amendment that is proposed, this addition would respect the underlying setbacks of the zoning district, which is R4. So we do keep that 25-foot front yard setback along D Street. In R4, the side yard setback is 10 feet. In this case, the proposal is to maintain a 10-foot side yard setback. And you can see that the applicant is also proposing some landscaping as a visual buffer, just as they have done in previous applications to the east. I understand that there may be some questions about design with this addition. It is located in a National Register Historic District. Because it's not local landmark, the Historic Preservation Commission has not been presented this case. But we do have Ed Zimmer here from our office, and he can speak to, as well as the applicant, any of the design questions that may come up.
I'll ask one. Thank you for coming, Ed, I appreciate it. As Paul said, since this didn't go before HPC, we kind of are acting as stewards in this regard. So can you just give us your two cents on if this is appropriate, fit for this neighborhood, et cetera?
In my opinion, this addition would make this whole site fit better within the context of the surrounding neighborhood. On this block, there are currently three houses, and this building takes up approximately three lots. Very typical in South Bottoms that there would either be six houses or even a larger number of houses on partial lots along a street frontage. And I think this addition, coming up to the ordinary setback line of the houses along the block, and giving another unit kind of a street frontage, I think will improve the overall compatibility of this building, which is there because of the heritage of the whole area. I've also noted that in the letter description, they would align this building's architecture with the existing building, which I think would be appropriate for the site and for the wider district.
And driving through here, I mean, D Street is kind of the, one of the big, beautiful boulevards, it's not really a boulevard, but big streets, major streets in the area. Can you just talk for a second about other historic buildings right there? I know that this is across from the park, so it's kind of a real visible...
Let me talk about D Street itself a little bit if I could. It is one of the 120-foot right-of-ways of the original plan, as opposed to 100 feet, which is the standard right-of-way in the original plan. And certain of the key streets, D for its association with the park, actually Seventh Street just east of this is also 120-foot right-of-way, which is why you get huge area between the houses on Seventh. And those kinds of streets, 15th and J emphasizing the capital, 11th and S historically at the heart of the original university campus, were those special-character streets. And the oak planting along D further emphasizes that and the park adjacency. The park itself, I think, is a very historic spot, first park space laid out in Lincoln. Kitty corner from this site, just across the intersection, is Frieden Lutheran Church, the oldest of the traditional German-from-Russia churches in the neighborhood, and then the houses themselves surrounding it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take testimony from the applicant.
Good afternoon, Tim Gergen with the Clark Anderson Partners. Kathy, thank you for contacting us, we're always excited to present our projects. What I'm showing right here is the architectural facade of our building addition. As you can see, it mimics the existing building, almost like its sister twin. There, just like Ed was saying, it does present another type of building frontage where it could act like another house, so it supports that front setback area. We did have a neighbor meeting this weekend, this last Sunday. The neighbors, the neighbors directly adjacent to our museum were present. They did not voice any concerns over our project. They're very happy that we are keeping everything to the one-story level and keeping the same historic presence of the building that what it is today. And I guess we can go over to some site plan, and this is what it would look like on the site down here at this location.
So Tim, there aren't any plans then to increase the elevation on this part? It's going to be same height as what's there now?
Correct, correct. Same roof line, same height, yep. And we do have a member?
Yes, I'm Bob Wagner, the president of the American Historical Society of Germans from Russia International. And the reason we're looking at this expansion, and we just received a collection of over 5,000 books and other items about the history of the Germans from Russia, and part of accepting that donation from a person in California was that it not go on the basement level where our current library is. And it's always been an issue that's before us, storing library materials and so forth on that lower level. And so this is an attempt to bring our library up to that first floor. And we don't anticipate any great deal of increase in traffic. I mean, it's listed as a club, but this is a museum and genealogy research center. So the traffic we get, it will expand hopefully, but not significantly. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, seeing none. We'll move on to see if there's any additional testimony in support of this application. All right, is there any testimony in opposition? Did you, any additional questions for staff or the applicant? All right, we will go ahead and entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
Second.
That was Beecham, then Harris?
Okay. Thank you.
Cor?
You said second, didn't you?
I did.
She did too. Oh, we jinxed each other.
Well, I, Maya wins. Cause she's not closer to me.
Well, I would just add the comments. First of all, I'd like to thank the applicant for coming in today, and thanks for showing us the designs. I think, especially in a historic district, when things aren't going before HPC, it's really helpful, because we are sort of acting as stewards of a historic area, for us to see what it's going to look like if there's going to be an elevation change. I really appreciate you guys keeping with the current architectural style of the building, and I intend to support the motion.
I just want to echo Commissioner Beecham's comments. Thank you for coming and showing us the picture, it kind of cleared up some things. I'm glad Kathy pulled it from the consent agenda so we could hear some of this stuff. And this is a great resource for genealogy people. It's great that we have it here.
All right, we'll go ahead and call the vote.
Beecham?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next item under public hearing is item 4.1A, change of zone 15007, from R3 Residential District and B2 Planned Neighborhood Business District to R4 Residential District on property generally located at North 14th Street and Indigo Road. Item 4.1B, a special permit 15014 to allow a planned unit development to allow a mix of duplexes and triplexes consisting of 22 dwelling units on approximately 2.35 acres of property generally located at North 14th Street and Indigo Road. Item, or special permit 15014 is final action by the planning commission unless appealed to the city council.
Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these applications? I don't see any. Go ahead, Tom.
Tom Jacob, planning staff. As was mentioned, we have two applications here, a change of zone and a special permit for a community unit plan. This area is on North 14th, a little bit north of Superior Street. There's North 14th Street, Superior is off the map, this is Indigo Road. This is the B2 area up here, this is R3 on this portion of it. And that's being proposed to be changed to R4 Residential Dwelling District, and the community unit plan is for 22 dwelling units. The community unit plan will have, that's how, will take direct access to Indigo Road. The other 17 units will come off of the new street from 15th Street, and will curve and stop here going to the north. And when this parcel to the north would develop in the future sometime, that road would extend to the north. The R4 density for this would allow 31 units by the density calculations, they're showing a total of 22. The applicant is requesting waivers to lot area, lot width, and front yard setback, front yard setback reduced from 25 feet to 20 feet. The re, kind of the reason for the waivers is that the R4 does not allow townhomes by right. The zoning code defines townhomes as three units or more attached. So you can do two units attached, but the only way you could do three units is through the community unit plan. And because the R4 does not allow townhomes, when you look at setbacks, you have to go to other allowed uses, which is 5,000 square foot lot area, an average lot width of 50 feet, and 25-foot front yard setback. If you look at two-family attached, you can see the lot area is half, 2,500, 25-foot average lot width. So what they're asking for is pretty much in line with the two-family dwelling setback slot width lot area. So planning is not opposed to the waivers. And with that, I'll take any questions.
I have one. Can you tell me a little bit more about, in your staff report, it talks about reducing, there's the 20% penalty. Is that because of the CUP, because of the size of the parcel, both?
Yeah, it's the size of the parcel. The zoning code says if you're under, if you're less than 10 acres, you have a penalty or reduction. If it's between 5 and 10 acres, it's a reduction of 10% of what the density would allow without a deduction. And if it's less than 5 acres, it's a 20% reduction.
And that's because they're doing a CUP, or just in general?
No, that's through, the way the density calculations are determined through the CUP.
Tom, I was trying to tell from the map, is there a sidewalk here or a walking lane? What do we have that goes along the road?
Along 14th?
Actually looking along Maker Street there?
Sidewalk on both sides of the street.
Okay. And then, would you just address the parking? I know you mentioned it in your staff report a little bit. How much parking do we feel that we need to have for guest parking in this area?
We're asking, we have a condition that they provide eight guest parking stalls, which is one per two units along Maker Street. We're only counting the 17 here, we're not including these five down here. They show, let me zoom in a little bit. They show two stalls here, one here, one here, and there's room for two cars on the Where, one of the conditions is to delete this stall, because we feel that people backing out of their driveway here, that that stall would impede cars backing out. So the condition was that they somehow show eight guest parking stalls.
Okay. Are they showing eight right now?
No. They're showing, well, there would be, by deleting this one, there would be three here, and then we count the two that are on the street.
So right now they have five.
So they have five.
Any other questions for Tom? All right, we'll move on to testimony from the applicant.
Good afternoon, Tim Gergen with Clark Anderson Partners, representing the developer, M&amp;W Holdings, on this project. We've met with the city staff on this project several times, and the neighborhood as well. We agree with all conditions by the city staff, including the parking. After meeting with the neighbors, the neighbors did voice concern about the parking as well, and we want to accommodate and be good neighbors in this neighborhood. However, we are going to disagree on one item about parking and how we provide that. So what we're showing here is a public street, and what we're showing is the future development to the north is what city wanted us to show, how that would develop out. And so that's what triggered the alignment of the road we're showing on our property. And what we're showing is, is that we're going to accommodate parking as much as we can within our development, but the public street, without having any driveways on the north side, can accommodate 10 parking stalls. If those homes develop into a single-family nature, and each home has a driveway coming off there, then we're able to accommodate eight stalls on the north side of the road, thus being able to provide well over 11 parking stalls, what is required by the planning department. So, we're not disagreeing with planning department on providing parking, we're just disagreeing with how we provide that and how that property develops to the north. I think what planning department stature is saying that if the property to the north develops as more townhomes, then that it could have, eliminate all that parking on that north side roadway. And what we feel is that we're showing how this is laying out, we're showing single-family homes, if it develops into townhomes or more duplexes, that that developer to the north side, when thus, would have to come before planning commission and get approval for that end. So I think at this point, we're willing to come forward and say that only two driveways can take access off of this public street as part of our development, and that future planning commissions from 10, 20 years from here out would like to adhere to that condition as well, and thus being able to provide sufficient parking on the, for this development. Off of Indigo as well, we've heard neighbor concern about parking, and as you can see, our layout of our units are put back from the street a lot more than what the existing homes are. And this provides, as you can see, this unit right here has, is parking two stalls in the driveway, and thus overhanging into the sidewalk. And we're pushing our stall, our units back farther from the street so that we can easily accommodate multiple cars in the driveway, so that we can get more cars off of the street and not have on-street parking in this location. Also, as we were going forward, we're showing the lots, really how we envision them developing, or the driveways coming off the east, the north and southbound streets. So we envision the homes facing east and west on this location. We've got a high-power overhead line that is on that mutual property line, that we feel that a lot of property owners are not going to want to have that in their front yard. We feel that the homeowners are going to turn, the future homeowners to the north of our parcel will turn those homes, face them east-west, and not face them towards our development, and thus have this large overhead line in their front yard of their home. And so that's why we are pretty confident that we feel that those homes are going to face east and west, not take driveways to our access point. Also, we have about a three-foot grade change that, from the property to the north in our parcel, that will make a steep driveway going down into that house, that creates the unlikelihood of any sort of driveways coming off of our street, and thus reducing our parking count on the public street. And I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Tim, I'm trying to understand what you're asking of us.
Sure.
So what, what condition are you asking us to change, and what are you asking it to say?
Well, under the planning department's condition of providing, condition number eight, or let's see...
2.8?
2.8. I'd like to maybe recommend a modification of that, is showing eight, a minimum of eight parking stalls on either the property or the Maker Street, with the condition of the property to the north having only two driveway access onto Maker Street, and thus we're able to easily accommodate the eight guest parking stalls. So I would probably strike the south side of Maker Street and just say Maker Street altogether, and add the condition of only having two driveways connect to Maker Street from the parcel to our north.
So, in order to do that, aren't you asking us to put conditions on a future developer for their property, and they're not before us?
Well, what I'm probably asking is putting it into a note, possibly, yes, of putting a condition on... of putting a condition on the property to, to the north. And, and to tell you the truth, it made, that property north may never ever develop, may not ever want to have a driveway onto, onto Maker Street.
But your client doesn't own that property, right?
No, he does not. I guess we could just eliminate that, that condition altogether, and just say, strike the word "south side" of Maker Street, and just say "Maker Street."
I have some additional questions, I think that maybe might alleviate some of that.
Okay.
I'm going to start, it's going to seem like I'm not even going there. How many bedrooms are these units supposed to have?
I believe they're four-bedroom.
Correct.
Three-bedroom, sorry.
Are these intended to be owner-occupied, or investor-owned?
The developer I'm working with is building them, and they are going, he's going to sell them.
Okay. That's all I got right now.
Okay.
Now I got more. How, if we do this R3 instead of R4, that's going to cut down on the number of units you can put in there.
Correct. It's going to cut down the amount of units and probably not make the project cash flow, and would, probably we'd pull the application at that point.
Okay.
As you, as you can see, the, I believe it's in the staff report, I can't remember, we're allowed quite a bit more units than what we're requesting. We just needed a little bit more. I think it was just two or three more units than what the R3 district allows, and that's why we were going to the R4 with the CUP.
Could you put up your map where you showed the parking on Makers?
And so this is showing 10, 10 cars parked along the street. If you had no driveways, you could park 10. If you had a driveway, you'd have to eliminate two, two stalls, or two parked cars there.
And that's the north side of Makers?
That's the north side, right here.
Okay. And how many parking places could you accommodate on the south side of Makers?
Uh, we had originally shown two at this location. One here, one here, and then additional two on the street in between the driveways. And planning department is asking us to remove this one for people backing out into this one. So we've got 1, 2, 3, 5, right now, we're showing, as per the condition, right now.
And you can't fit another three along Makers? On the south side?
On the south side, unfortunately, we cannot.
Okay.
Not within the realm of the law that states. I'm sure, because the driveways might be a little bit, if you have a small car, you might be able to fit in between the driveways, but not what is considered a standard parking stall.
The, the property between the imaginary cars and the property line, is that your, your client's property?
That, that is. That's, because we're having a public street, most of that will be right-of-way.
So they couldn't put driveways across there onto your property anyway, could they?
Well, the right-of-way goes all the way up to that property line. That was something the city wanted us to do, is make sure that our right-of-way for our public street went all the way up to that north property line, so there would be no restriction of being able to access that public street.
I'm sorry, Tim, can you just point on the map which space you and Ken are talking about?
Pretty, pretty much this property right there. It's a little bit wider than a typical right-of-way because of this curve right through here. It's about 24 feet, I believe. And a typical right-of-way from back of curve is 16 and a half.
Okay, if we kept the condition that the parking had to be on the south side of Maker Street, where would you find the three more parking stalls?
Uh, that's a good question. That's what we're scratching our head at, is trying to find those three more parking stalls. And it seems to us, where we have an abundance of on-street parking on the north side, that we would pave more green area around these units when we see that there's ample street parking already provided, because people will be parking on that, on that street already, and not possibly in a parking lot, off, off to this corner. Maybe, you know, we might be able to shoehorn another parking stall or two in there. What we're really trying to do is preserve our green space, not, by not trying to pave more items on this plan. You can see what we're doing with our driveways is we're necking them down at the sidewalk to have more room for the street trees, to have more room for green in around that street, and then wind it out as we get to the garage, is we're really trying to create a little bit more green areas where a lot of these developments have that straight driveway, and it's, it's a lot of concrete and pavement that has no room for the landscaping.
Okay, but if the driveways go in, in the manner that you don't want them to go in, would you still have eight parking stalls?
Right, yes. Well, if, uh, our developer would be building them and selling them, and so we would, we would lose those two parking stalls on the south side of Maker Street if they went, if the driveways went in straight and not necked down.
So, um, if you, if you counted the space in, on the driveways in front of the garages, how many guest spaces would, would that provide for?
Sure, well, each unit has, is a two-stall garage. So you have two stalls in the garage, and then you'd have two stalls in front of the garage. And then if you had a smaller vehicle along Maker Street, we're just providing this, the typical, you might overhang a little bit in there. So you have the possibility for each unit having six parking stalls.
And then for the condition, could you go over again? If we, if, if we didn't impose a condition on a future development, how would you suggest that it, that it read?
Well, I, I would simply just strike the word "south side."
So it shows space for eight parking stalls either on private property or Maker Street?
Correct.
Thank you.
Tim, have you approached the owner of the property onto the north about this?
Uh, we, we held a neighbor meeting, and we invited the neighbor to the north. Uh, did not show up, I believe. I don't think that. Oh, great.
I have a question about that meeting. Did you, who came to the meeting? I mean, was it people right adjacent, was it farther out?
Yeah, we had, for the, for the predominant area, they're all mostly rentals. We had, I believe, and we had the owner at the corner, well, it was at the corner of Indigo and 15th Street. And we have the Neighborhood Association president that was in attendance, and he is here as well.
Did you have more people than that, or is that the only people that showed?
Uh, we had two or three property owners and the Neighborhood Association president.
All right. I, I think we're done with questions for you. So if you wanted to come forward, and could you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, it is Danya Pegram Siders, and I'm the owner and manager of a company called Ag Invest. And with all the references to the north of the property, north of the property, north of the property, that property is mine, is in historical preservation. So if we do any altering to this, it has to go through the physical historical preservation committee. There is no future development planned for this, because if I have to do future development, it will go from Morton Street, cross my house, to the other Morton Street. Now, if the city has decided something else, then I would like, you know, a copy of that. I was not able to come to this meeting because it was the day that my, my brother passed away. Okay? I would have been more than happy to be there, but typically, I do know these meetings from having them, you get about three people. And you do another one, and you get another, maybe four. So I do have concerns about where the location is when he had, of course, he took it away.
Okay. So, um, I hate to interrupt you, but I do need to know for the record, is your testimony in support of the application, or in opposition to the application?
It's not in opposition.
It's in opposition, okay. We're a little bit out of order, but we'll go with it, so thank you.
Um, and so I, when you're talking about this area here, you know, I have a drive, driveway from the entrance of 14th, and then we basically have a minor hop that people try to go down our driveway all the time, too. So I need you to know if that is something that they're going to be approaching onto my area that's in historical preservation, or not. It sounds like, I'm, it's, I'm not maybe brought up to speed with that, but it's, I do have concerns of grade level, and then bothering the historical presi- preservation. And we are making it a beautiful green space right now. And all the neighbors are very happy that I'm making a green space. Most constructors, when they leave, just lots available, they say we're up 15 feet high of weeds, mow them down once a year. I fertilize the, all that space, I mow it. So, um, the property owners and association there are very happy with us because we try to keep it clean, uh, green, and just a pleasant area to look at. And so my, my main question here is that how is it affecting the property? And how is it going to affect my historical preservation? The land is in histor- historical preservation, along with my house.
Questions for me? Thank you.
No.
And I, I'm sure that, um, Mr. Gergen would be happy to try to answer your questions for you while we go on with testimony.
Ma'am, could I get your address?
4900 North 14th Street.
Thank you.
68521.
Thank you.
All right, do we have testimony in support of this application? Do we have any other testimony in opposition to the application?
Hi, I'm Todd Losky, president of Prairie Ridge Homeowners Association. I live at 5120 North 20th Street. I think we've already addressed most of the concerns of the neighbors, but the primary concern is the parking. On the development on Indigo, all of those are duplex townhomes, and all of them are pretty much rented to college students. And I don't know if you've ever been down that road, but the parking is just, the road is parked both sides of the street, all the way up around, and up, even up into 15th Street where this street currently will be created. So putting, you know, three, threeplex townhomes in the area with the, the very, very limited parking, and the reduced setbacks, I think, you know, if they do end up getting rented to college students, it compounds the problem. What, what we see on Indigo, which is part of our homeowners association, is the college students don't use the garages at all. That's their party rooms. And, uh, so they put two cars on the driveway, and then the rest go on the streets. And, uh, it's very, very congested, and very difficult to get them out of the area. The other concern of the neighbors is, you know, traffic. The future development shows Maker Street going north, and then, uh, meeting Morton, and that's the other property owner. Uh, testified Morton Street eventually, which showed to go through to 14th and intersect with 14th, but that's not likely to happen anytime soon, because, as she said, it's a historic property. So to the north, the only access is Fletcher, clear, clear north. And, um, a vast majority of these homeowners actually cut down Prairie Lane and 20th Street to get out to Superior, because Indigo doesn't intersect. You can't left-turn onto, onto 14th Street there. You can go around to Hilltop, but, uh, we, we see a lot of cars coming down Prairie Lane and, and 20th Street. So between the parking and the, and the increased traffic, and, uh, no easy access out to 14th Street, we're opposed to the development. And, uh, I guess what we would like to see is maybe duplex townhomes with more off-street parking, if, if we can keep it to that. Any questions, for me?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have any other testimony in opposition to the application? Questions for staff?
Um, I have one for Tom. And maybe this is just a procedural issue, but Tom, can you, can you tell me, um, what, what would happen if we put some sort of condition saying parking, trying to restrict future development? Can we do that? Did we just put in, I, I, um, Mr. Gergen mentioned a note. I'm just unfamiliar with the situation about putting conditions on future development. Is that, does that happen? Or is it more suggested?
You mean on property that's not before us?
Right, that's.
I can't recall doing that. Not an attorney, but I would think there would be some legal ramifications there. Issue of parking on the north side of the road, even though they show a conceptual layout of single-family, there's no guarantee that that would be that way. There's no, um, condition that that property owner, the north, develop it that way. We just always have a condition, just show us that what you're doing is not going to imp- affect the north, that, so they can't develop. So that's what they're showing. You know, there's no guarantee that person on the north won't, somebody in the future won't do townhomes. A lot of times, we've heard, you know, that, um, oh, this property will never develop, it'll be 50 years from now. I can think of one recently, within the last probably six months, that was said in the south part of town. And that property, the, uh, property owner to the north came in two months later with, uh, wanting to, uh, develop. So you never know. So yeah, there's no guarantee how long they would be able to use the north, the north side of Maker Street for parking in the future. That could all go away. You could have a mirror, mirror image of what you have on the south.
So Tom, you're not in favor of their proposed amendment to the conditions?
No.
Where, where do, do you find space to add the three extra parking spaces?
It's probably going to take losing a unit. That's the only way I see it. I did kind of a quick little mock-up here where if this unit went away, you'd still have the driveway, and then you would just, you know, come in like a normal parking lot. We'd come in here, and you'd have stalls facing north, and you could get nine to 10 stalls along here.
Can you pan out for a minute on your picture?
Well, I, I just did a blow-up of that area.
I was curious if there was space all the way to the right there, um, along 15th? No, um, along 15th, which is to your right. Or you can use your other map, that might be easier. There you go.
Out here?
Uh, I was actually just looking if there was a spot there for a parking spot just right along the, almost like you'd pull into, right, yeah, right in there.
No, it's, it's too close to the intersection. There's, I forget the requirement, but you, you're not allowed to park within so many feet of an intersection.
Okay.
Tom, is there any requirement from access management that that street couldn't go all the way through to 14th?
We have public works here, but yes, there is. 14th is an arterial, and spacing is a quarter mile apart. We already have Indigo, and then there's plans for some, someday, that Morton Street would go through.
Hey, Tom, who pays to put that road in? The one we're looking at?
This street? That's developer's cost.
Okay. So irony is, we're kind of looking at this, he's paying to put it in, and restricted to use one side of it.
True, which is normal on any development when you have a road that's right on the boundary of your, your property.
Maya?
The space that is to be deleted, does anything prevent someone from parking in that space? Even if it's deleted, will it just kind of be?
You mean if we get rid of this space that I was talking about?
Yeah.
Well, the, the site plan would be revised to show that as parking, and so it'd have to be built that way.
I thought she meant the parking stall.
The deleted, the parking stall that is to be deleted.
Oh, that one stall.
If it's going to be congested, is it? If it's going to be congested, is it, if it's likely a congested area, is it not likely that people would park there anyway?
Guess I'm not following you.
She's saying that people still park there.
Even if you don't have a stall, are people going to put their car there?
Well, you can't prevent people from doing things they're not supposed to do. But, I mean, if they put up like no parking sign, you know, tow-away zone or... That would be up to the homeowners association to regulate that because that would be on private property.
But it wouldn't be paved, right?
This would be paved, yes.
Okay.
This is a paved, this is a paved driveway that gives access to these units.
Okay.
And Tom, just to be clear, overall on what we're looking at doing here, I mean, we are, the CUP, we're allowing more density than normally would be in this area. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the rest of the area around this is zoned R3.
So if we were doing this in R3, so we're allowing more people into the space by approving the CUP, but we're also being asked to provide parking to accommodate for those additional people. So what you're saying is, in order to get that parking, we might have to lose a unit, but we wouldn't necessarily have to go back to R4, we're still...
In R3.
Uh, excuse me, R3, we're, we're still allowing more density, even if we lost one unit, than would normally be allowed in this area. Am I, am I understanding everything correctly?
If this was zoned R3, the density is 13 dwelling units.
Okay.
They're showing 22, and if they have to get rid of one, they'd still have, you know, 21.
Okay, so we're still looking at a higher. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure I was understanding it all correctly.
Tom, when Public Works reviewed this, they said that there were some drainage issues. Have those been addressed?
Probably not yet, and that'd probably be more a question for Tim Gergen. Usually we just take care of that after everything's done and they submit final plans. Then they're reviewed again to make sure they meet Public Works' conditions.
Yeah, so you have as a condition that they have to meet approval of Public Works?
That little strip of ground just north of the road there, that's, you said that's right-of-way? What does that not allow you to do? Use it at all?
No, you can use, I mean, right-of-way is, is everything that, you know, your right-of-way is your, your pavement, your curb, your grass area between the curb and the sidewalk, your sidewalk, and then usually about two feet on the other side of the sidewalk. That's all within your right, street right-of-way.
There's not room there for angled parking or anything?
It's a standard 60, well, this one's a little bit wider, but it's like a standard local residential street.
Any other questions for Tom? Rebuttal from the applicant?
First, I want to remind everyone that the parcel we're talking about is zone B2 currently. So a gas station by right, we can build there and build today, right there. And so we're downzoning to a residential district. And we're trying to accommodate and make a commercial land fit in with the pro forma of the sale of the land of a commercial zone land right now at this point. As far as the right-of-way width, it is wider than we typically have for right-of-way width, so it is burdening the property even more so by having that right-of-way go through there. We've been trying to work with the city and the neighborhood quite a bit on this. And our initial concept, and I believe the Ag Invest owner to the properties to the north of us kind of solidifies this, is that they didn't want, are not interested in developing the property. And, and we're not, at first weren't really interested in connecting to the property. Our first submittal to the City of Lincoln was a private street with a cul-de-sac not having connection to the property to the north. When we have a private street, we can then dictate the driveways to the north. We can then dictate the parking. We can then dictate that a little bit better. So I do understand the city's call to us to try to provide connectivity to neighboring properties. We often do that in shopping centers where we want to make sure shopping centers, all of their parking lots connectivity as well. And so we accommodated the planning department's request to do a public street and create this connectivity. But when we do that, it created this issue of the parking. And so that's kind of where we're in this dilemma of the private street, no connection, cul-de-sac, and the public street where it gives up a little bit of our ability to regulate that private street and that parking now because we're, we're subject to the City of Lincoln Police Department enforcing parking and, and how that property to the north is going to develop if and when at all at that point as, as well.
Tim, before you take that down, can you put that up? That, that shows 13?
Yeah, quite a bit. It's a, it's a longer street because when we... We have a shorter street when we introduce that curve, and we have a longer street there, so we are able to increase the amount of parking.
But how many units? I mean, that, that's 13 units, the other ones?
15.
15 units, right?
Right. I, I think with this concept, we would most likely probably pull that cul-de-sac back and add those two units back right here.
So, but on this, the total dwelling units, if you count the stuff on Indigo Road, is 20?
22, I believe is what, yes, our total unit count is 22.
On what you submitted, but on that one right there, it's only 20, right?
Correct. It was what, is what our initial preliminary plan was. It was never an official submittal. It was just our pre-submittal application meeting with the city to kind of go over these issues on that.
And that was still asking for R4?
Still asking for R4, yes. So what that does is the private street with no connectivity does alleviate a little bit about this parking issue, but it doesn't provide that connectivity to any possible future development to the north.
But based on that, the connectivity did get you a couple more units, right?
Couple more units, right.
Any other question for the applicant?
Two.
Oh, you need to talk to him privately afterwards. You've already had your chance, I'm sorry.
Is, is the developer, I mean, completely opposed to eliminating one of those units and creating a parking in that area?
At, at this point, he is, yes. Especially when we feel that the street itself is going to provide that parking. It, it, that's where we're going to agree to disagree on is, is where that street will provide that parking that is going to be needed and required on that whole north side. Yep. The cost estimates coming back is, is the cost estimate for a public street versus a private street. It's, it is 15 to 20% more cost-wise to build the public street and that's why we're going with... We're choosing to go with the public street at the recommendation of the city, but we do realize that, just running some costs, that it does cost a little bit more to run a public street versus a private street.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Can we have Tom come back up?
I think we can.
You'd still have them rebuttal.
Yeah.
Tom, does the cul-de-sac, why doesn't that make sense?
Well, the biggest, the biggest one was the connectivity. If they did the cul-de-sac with the private street, we still was, and, and we had looked at that and had discussions with them on that site plan before their official submittal. And we were still going to require that that private street extend to their north boundary. Every private street in the city has public access easements over them, so the property to the north would still have the right to access that street. We would not have recommended approval to adding two units at the end of that cul-de-sac. We still would, we'd still be arguing about guest parking stalls. We'd still have the same condition that you cannot count the north side of that street for permanent parking. As you can see, they're actually still ending up with one, if, if they, if one unit is deleted, they still end up with one unit more than what they originally came in with. The other reason we don't, we're kind of trying to get away from private streets is because we have problems down the road where homeowners associations either dissolve or they don't have the money to take care of maintenance once the street starts having problems.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Anybody else have questions for him? Since we let Tom come up out of order, Tim, did you have any rebuttal to that? Nope, all right. We'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
We have approval.
That was Ms. Beecham. Is there a second? I'm going to second it just for discussion purposes.
I'll go first. I have a lot of issues with this one. I don't like the parking situation. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we already have some issues on Indigo Road where it's a huge student living and we have lots of parties and nuisance calls and stuff going on there, parking issues. We already have a bad problem there and I think that this would just compound that problem. But let me back up before I even get there because this, to me, is spot zoning. Everything around it is R3, and then we'd have this chunk that's just R4, and I don't care for it. So I, there's, I, I would not approve the change of zone to R4 in the first place. And, and then I have problems with the CUP just because of the parking. I don't like that you just see this garage. There's no entrance on the front. It's just not very conducive to owner-occupied dwellings, and I think that's a huge problem in this area already. We don't need to compound it.
Other discussion?
The parking, I'm struggling with the parking as well. I'm not as opposed to the R3, but I, I do believe that we need to, if we're going to increase the density in this area over what the surrounding areas are, that we need to make sure we're not creating problems by not having enough parking. And as much as I would love to say the across-the-street provides the solution, I don't know. I mean, we have seen, just since I've been on this commission, people saying, oh, this will never develop. And, and then, you know, future plans do change. And so I, I don't think we can mandate what someone who's a property owner or may want to develop a northern piece of this. I, I'm very uncomfortable counting on that. So I guess that's, those are my comments.
Well, I actually think the presentations that are before us are a good compromise position for what we're trying to accomplish. I think changing to R4 is a good development for this area. I think, you know, it's pretty standard to require a public right-of-way. And I think our main concern in the area is parking. And I think by having the condition that the parking has to be on the south side and ha, and even if that makes them use, lose a unit, they're still a unit ahead of what they originally proposed to the Planning Commission. And I think that's a good compromise position. We get the public street. They do lose one unit off of the plan we have now, but they're still a unit ahead over their initial proposal when it was a private street. And I, I don't approve private streets. I think they do cause a lot of future development problems. Any other discussion?
So just for, are, are we approving this with the number of units that they're asking for? Or with that issue, we would be approving it?
Okay. Here's what we have to do, as I see it. We have to vote first on the change of zone, and then we have to vote on the special permit. And Tom, if I'm correct, the special permit is the one that has the parking conditions in it. Is that right?
And those would need to be met?
Yeah. As, as presented by the Planning Commission, not as, not with a proposed amendment by the applicant.
Thank you.
But as to Chris's question, if we are leaving 2.8, the condition 2.8 as is, it pretty much entails that one unit will have to be eliminated.
From what they're telling us, maybe they'll get creative and find something in there. But the real question is, do we need that much parking? And if we do need that much parking for that many units, does it need to stay on one side of the road or can it use both sides? And I'm in a position, even though they're paying for the road, they can't dictate what happens to the other side. It's, it's just, it's not what we've done in the past. I don't even know if it'd be legal, and I'm not an attorney either. But it'd be bad precedent.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think we should be in a position where we're constraining the development to the north, especially when they're not in co-ownership.
All right, so that said, I think we will call, Jerry, you'll have to call the vote on the change of zone first.
I have one more question, kind of procedural. What happens, because the, the change of zone goes on to city council? What if city council doesn't approve the R4, but we've approved the CUP?
They can't, they can't happen.
Thank you.
Just, another, so if one unit would be eliminated, though, would lose that parking ability? So it would, you know...
I personally like...
You'd lose two potential spots, gaining three, although they may be a little more iffy because people may not use, choose to use them as parking.
That wouldn't change my mind. I mean, because I see units that maybe three, maybe four, they're probably going to be investor-owned, not owner-occupied. We're going to have three, maybe four people living in there. That violates our city ordinances for college students, for unrelated people in a unit. I think that we're, it's a recipe for disaster. And I, I just don't think it should be R4, and I don't think we should encourage this level of density here. We've already got a problem one block away.
Well, I, I think, you know, the plan is to build these and to sell them to people. And I don't think that we can constrain the use that the owners are going to put their units to. And if they're going to own them and they want to rent them to people, that's fine. And if they're not going to comply with city ordinance, then somebody needs to call the police. Anyway, let's call the vote.
Beecham?
No, we're gonna, we have to call the change of zone first.
Okay, okay. Change of zone, 15007 from R3 Residential District and B2 Plan Neighborhood Business District to R4 Residential District, property generally located at North 14th Street and Indigo Road.
Beecham?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Cor?
No.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one. Next item is special permit 15014 to allow a community unit plan to allow a mix of duplexes and triplexes consisting of 22 dwelling units on approximately 2.35 acres of property, generally located at North 14th Street and Indigo Road. And this is final action by the Planning Commission unless appealed to the city council.
Call the vote, please. Beecham?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Cor?
No.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one.
All right. At this time, if there is anyone that wants to speak on an item that was not on the Planning Commission's agenda, they may do so. Seeing no one, we are adjourned.